Okay. I got two for you. Ready?
All right, I'm going to call our special main of the San Jose City Council, the Housing Authority, the joint meeting for private property fund. And we'll be going into closed session. So is there... Is there a topic please?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, can you call... Will Paul first please?
No, please go ahead.
Council agency authority member Taylor.
Here.
Council agency authority number Torres.
Here.
Council agency authority number Warren.
Here.
Mayor of the town, Vice Sheriff person Dan.
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Shaw. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And Mayor and Council, there's three items on closed session tonight. One relates to property negotiations on the listed addresses. One is exposure to litigation. And one is litigation. And we close our lines.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn. Our meeting will be back. So go away at home.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Oh, I should have.
Oh, my.
The modern.
Well. There.
Oh, no.
Are you?
Wait.
Oh, I thought I had it. I was being so present.
Wow.
It's pretty. He didn't have like. I didn't know this was a door. It's quite there's even not. Yeah. You're fine, my love. This is not. I'm sorry to give you. Yeah.
I'm all good. That's all right.
Don't. Yes.
You don't know.
Oh. Yes, it's fine. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm. Look at this one right now. We'll put it to you.
For an order of things.
Yeah, because hopefully these lights are as old as the building, so they're hard to come by. Yeah.
That's good. I can see.
Let me see that for this one.
Okay, I'm going to call Matt Jordan, our regular meeting. February fourteenth, happy to have him on, time is dated, everyone. We have a report on the close session.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, there's nothing to report.
Okay, thanks. We'll call Matt Curry.
Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Tori.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Warren.
Here.
Mayor President Vice Chair Person Dan.
Yeah.
And Mayor Chairman Keller.
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, give you a place all rise. Hey, Mayor, Representative Bush. Michelle, we. Michelle, I'm in the office, right? Did you visit this guy?
Yes. Thank you. Pushman over your heart. Ready, begin.
Under the name of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and the Constitution of the Constitution of all.
Have word, please, Father.
Mr. Mayor, all members are here and present. Will now move on to special. Item eight, special presentation of the work which we have done. Mr. Mayor, next item is the head calendar.
Okay, all items on the consent chart will take your one motion unless something needs to be taken off either by staff. Was anyone looking out for the item review phone?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody have anything? Okay, anybody have anything they, uh, would like to discuss? Item number.
Question.
Okay, I have a first, I was kept at, and Gary was second. Please call both.
Mayor, bid a motion by Mayor President Dan. He's second by Council Member Taylor, I'll now see, we will call both. Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Yes.
Council Agency Authority Member Tori.
Yes.
Council Agency Authority Member Warren.
Yes.
Vice Chair Person, Mayor President Dan.
Yes.
And Mayor Chairman Sheller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing, the only comment I was going to make was our item number nine G. We are looking into the feasibility of, uh, we have RFP purchasing that ourselves rather than paying, uh, you. So I think that's really good. Okay. We're now at public hearings on TMA, this is a consideration runs to about the two oh two T California building and related model construction codes. This will be our second meeting. And before we do that, I am going to have a. Over here. So, uh, over there. Anybody want to comment on TMA? Okay. I believe. Yes, right.
Good evening, all City Council members, before you begin, you have consideration of the ordinance to adopt the two thousand twenty three California Building and Related Model Construction Code. This will be the second meeting for approval of ordinance number one one two A. Entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Stanton, California, Amending Division One of Title Sixteen and Chapter Seventeen Point Zero Eight of Title Seventeen of the Stanton Municipal Code, pertaining to the adoption of the two thousand twenty two edition of the California Building Code, Building Standards Code, consisting of the California Building, residential, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, fire, rebuilding standards, existing buildings, energy, historical buildings, and reference standard codes, as well as the International Swimming Code, law code, and the International Property Maintenance Code, with amendments there to enable making fine agreements before they are. This ordinance was introduced at regular City Council meeting in January twenty eighth, two thousand and three. We recommend it after this evening, you've got, you can, the council will definitely go to hearing if you've done so already. To ensure that the subject is not subject to CEBLO, and introduce ordinance number one one two A for its second meeting and adopt ordinance number one one two A. That concludes staff's report, staff is available to answer any questions if you need them.
Any questions?
All good.
All, all.
We have a motion by Council Member Tori, he's second by Mayor President Dan, I'll now see, we will vote for both. Council Member Tori.
Yes.
Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Council Member Warren.
Yes.
Mayor President Dan.
Yes.
And Mayor Sheller.
Okay, our second public hearing item is ten B, this is going to be the City Council, City Stanton, uh, amending sections two, twenty point four, hundred point three, three of the Stanton Municipal Code regarding accessory drawing units and junior accessory drawing loads to ensure consistency with state regulations that finances has to be exempt from California Department of Quality Act. Anybody from the public would like to address item ten B? Have we received any course volumes?
Yes, Mayor, we have none.
Okay, now go ahead. Bring it to the council.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, would you like to introduce Mr. Patricia Garcia to, um, introduce it, leave this back report to Council of the D.
It is so examine that. This is the first meeting. Robert.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council, before you tonight, this is ordinance of the City Council to, uh, amend Stanton Municipal Code Title Twenty in regards to accessory drawing units and junior accessory drawing units to ensure consistency and security. In September twenty twenty two, the Governor sent into law this Senate Bill that would amend this state ADU law that would come into effect in January first of two thousand and three. Due to the approaching date in November, staff has an emergency order to City Council, which was to, uh, which was adopted to serve as a future warning. The proposed zoning code amendment updates zoning code language in reverse ADUs and JADUs founding the tax resolution. Notable changes include increasing the maximum permitted height from sixteen feet to eighteen feet and ensuring that the Memphis is up to ten five feet, along with cleaning the, and the front yard in the event of any other locations of ADU replaced, permitting the ADU and JADU even if the property has nonconforming conditions, unless these conditions present a threat to public health and safety and additional language to ensure compliance with the building code required. On January eighteen, the Fining Commission recommended City Council approval to amend Stanton Municipal Code Title Twenty, which is the ordinance that you see before you take. This concludes staff's presentation, if you have any questions, um, I'll be back.
Thank you, that was excellent. Ooh, don't worry. Just a quick question. Some of the things that we have recently added to our ordinance, were they okay as far as big relative control by the state of California? Were we okay with that?
So the changes that we're adding were to ensure compliance with the new regulations. And yes, we were, with, with these changes, we will be compliant.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Garcia? All right, thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the council. We're going to take four recommended actions, would you go over those, please?
Yes, sir. We have recommended action number one is City Council condemned the public train, which has been completed. Item two is City Council find that this proposed project is condemned from ZEBLO. Item three is introduce her first meeting ordinance number one one two seven, which Ms. Garcia has done. And number four is set set ordinance number one one two seven for public hearing and second meeting at the next scheduled City Council meeting, I've done very twenty eighth.
Is your motion? Here we have a first progress to tell, a second progress to.
Mr. Mayor, once again, Mr. Tori. Once again, we have a motion by Council Member Taylor, except by Council Member Tori, so we'll now see, we will vote for both. Council Member Tori.
Yes.
Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Council Member Warren.
Yeah.
Mayor President Dan.
Yes.
And Mayor Sheller.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to our unfinished business, item eleven A. This is a, "Harper Project Updates and Expansion and Exchanges of ARPA Funding Public Safety Pilot Program." Say, Major.
Yes, good evening, honorable Mayor, members of the council, staff is excited to bring to you tonight an ARPA update. As a reminder through the passage of H R thirteen nineteen, the American Rescue Committee Act of twenty twenty one, also known as ARPA, state tribal and local governments received much needed relief to help offset the negative impacts of COVID nineteen. The city's coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds allocation was just over nine point one million dollars, and the full amount must be incurred right in the calendar year of twenty twenty four. So I want to begin with a chart that shows you the analysis of where the ARPA monies have been allocated so far. So you can see on the pie graph above, we have a number of different categories. And I want to make clear that all of these categories in some way or another address COVID nineteen impacts that were experienced by our community, but the direct COVID nineteen response specifically in relation to the coverage of sick leave related to COVID nineteen, cleaning, additional sanitation, those types of activities. You also see in orange, we've spent a significant amount of ARPA on crime prevention. In yellow, government efficiency and stability of through software and additional, um, short term personnel. Significant amount of homeless outreach and engagement. Green represents quality of life infrastructure and purple quality of life program. And the shaded gray and white area that represents economic development, the bulk of that is actually available for the council to consider programming, which staff will be bringing to as part of the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four budget workshop process due to not purchasing the balance market property. So I want to begin by highlighting some of the bigger projects that we've spent our ARPA funds are. I won't go through every single one in detail, the council has received updates on a quarterly basis, but of course, if there's questions on any that you don't want to tell, please do ask. I wanted to start with services that have really impacted our community post COVID nineteen. So we know that counseling, community outreach, and communications has been very important. We're proud to share that the FRC, the Family Resource Center, has been able to partner with a community based organization to offer counseling services for the period of October twenty twenty two and December twenty twenty two, equaling fifty individuals served and over two hundred and sixty counseling sessions provided. And this can cover a number of topics, including domestic violence, parenting, educational health, mental health. And so there's a wide variety of topics that individuals can access to. We've also been supporting the senior meal distribution. We have the second harvest food bank pantry, the lunch cafe meals, as well as home delivery meals. And in addition to wanting to make sure we have healthy foods and healthy mental spaces for our community, we also want to make sure we have healthy places to play. We've spent a significant amount of resources on developing our parks and master plan, which will guide our strategy to deliver parks and open spaces to the community over the long term. And we've had outstanding participation in our community engagement and outreach sessions, as you can see. We've held three distinct workshops on September thirtieth, October twenty first, and November nineteenth. And we've had great attendance in person and even greater attendance on our online survey. And just as a reminder, our last Parks Master Plan was updated in two thousand and five, so it's certainly too far. So the Parks Master Plan sets the strategy for the long term, but we've also allocated funds to do immediate improvements to our park projects today. So we were able to piggyback on top of funds that were already allocated, repair projects that were already identified to enhance or augment those projects. So one of them is the Stanton Park redesign, as we discussed, Stanton Park will become the gateway to our new sports park. And so we wanted to make sure we were taking advantage of this opportunity to revitalize and re-energize the whole area. So we included that in the approved scope of work with PDK Architects, and we're currently under review for SoCal Edison to make sure those plans, um, line with their easement requirements. And Stanton Park will include an outdoor fitness court and mural, as the council has already approved. And we're looking at other community desires and wants for other additional amenities that can be added to augment our loss. Premier Park is another park that will benefit from some additional ARPA allocation, so partly because of the impacts of COVID nineteen on construction costs and also because with additional funds, we're able to add additional amenities. Amenities will be able to enhance the design of Premier Park, which is currently at sixty percent. And we also wanted to make sure we partnered with some of our most valued community based organizations, including our Boys and Girls Club right across the street. So if you recall, the city awarded them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bathroom remodeling and improvement plan. And we are, we have been supporting the Boys and Girls Club in trying to get this project off the road. We recently met with Dr. Sue Johnson, one of their board members, and she has graciously also provided some assistance through the Savannah School District Facility Division to help them in terms of identifying, um, the most efficient way to go through the project. So they are excited to be getting this extra support, they're excited to get the project off the ground, they're a little bit nervous for bids are going to come back, but the RFP is planned for March twenty ninth. So moving away from our parks and open spaces, we also wanted to, uh, focus on neighborhood quality of life infrastructure. So there's two areas that the council, uh, has currently allocated ARPA funds. One is the blue light security cameras, so we've, uh, provided a brief description of these previously. These are the blue lights that you see flashing down beach, uh, as you enter, um, the city limits of Anaheim. We've put in a purchase order for ten lights through the, we did an RFP process through the city of Anaheim, and these lights will extend down beach, and they've been identified to be placed in key locations which will provide enhanced security and public safety. In addition, the council approved neighborhood infrastructure improvements to provide some basic but effective physical barriers to some of the areas that we were finding most vandalized or open for illegal dumping. And so we're starting with a very basic fix of implementing and installing hard rails at some locations that people were easily able to drive cars back into. And so on the map, it's a little bit difficult to see, but there's blue dots located on that graphic, and those are the proposed installation points for this first round of funding, and we are currently seeking, uh, quotes for those for our real installation. We are excited to see the improvements in terms of dumping and illegal campaigns.
Yeah, we're going to make it a jail. I think those same posts, if you deal with the specific rubber and let them know that we're doing it, if they might get in on it. We can put those, uh, because that would limit access to automobiles under a regular, it keeps people in tickets.
And now we want to transition over to the business side of the community. So we were able to hire some temporary physicians during fiscal year twenty one, uh, I'm sorry, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. That was a planning manager position, a compartmental assistant. And with their additional support, we were able to apply for a number of grants, and, um, those are successfully in process and also hosted our business grant opening. We'd like to highlight, in July of twenty twenty two, we welcomed the Beach Terrace Assistive Living. November, we have, we welcomed the upgraded and remodeled Super King. Just this month, just this month, we welcomed two restaurants, Chica's Tacos, and those seven ones. So we're very excited for the additional support we have in community development to really pursue these economic development opportunities. And our economic development individual, it's really one dedicated person, is putting together a lot of great ideas for our new director to consider when she starts in two weeks. Another area we added additional temporary support was at our police station, we added a crime prevention specialist and an office specialist. So the crime prevention specialist, in addition to being busy supporting staff internally, has been out and about in our community, making presentations, making connections, and building those relationships. She has been, um, at a number of neighborhood watch meetings, and she has been attending a number of business watch meetings, as well as hosting a very well received active shooter training, which we hosted here at City Health. And we had great attendance at that, and lots of positive feedback from that. So she's continuing to be a liaison with the community and listening to what their wants and needs are and providing that information or training available. This is one of the most exciting areas of where we've allocated our ARPA funds, which is our homeless outreach coordinators. So the council allocated resources to provide two additional homeless outreach coordinators to the two existing permanent full time, um, coordinators that we had, and they have been incredibly productive over this period. So the homeless outreach coordinators are really all about offering services and connecting not only the city services of the county and the broader regional services. And you can see based on the statistics from this table that they've been very productive. We've had two hundred and seventy seven unique client engagements. We had a total of one thousand twenty five client engagements, and for those of you following along with, um, you know, best practices related to offering services to the homeless, it takes multiple contacts, it's very rare for somebody to accept services the first time. So some of these may represent conversations twenty times with one individual, and some of these may represent conversations two times. We successfully placed nineteen individuals in their housing or shelter, and that can include interim housing, relocation, or emergency motel assistance. And we successfully referred twenty eight individuals to help embed that service. We also, in starting in February first, which is when the county's cold weather shelter opened up, we were one of the cities that took advantage of that opportunity and transported twenty, or forty clients, sorry, to the cold weather emergency shelter. And we had one client accept transportation to the county. So again, this is, I think, one of the most impactful for our city, and this leads into our public safety pilot program, which really grew out of an unmet need that we found when we were working with our homeless outreach coordinators. So the council allocated resources to build out this public safety pilot program at the very end of the year. And so these statistics focus, so of course, they work in a group, we have code enforcement, law enforcement, and the homeless outreach coordinators, and we saw all the statistics for the homeless outreach coordinators previously. This slide focuses on the statistics for the one deputy that we currently have working on the public safety pilot program. So one hundred and eighty six homeless contacts, this is independent of the contacts made by the HOPS. And of those, we have eight parole contacts, twenty one probation contacts, nineteen prostitution contacts, and one hundred and three enforcement activity. What I think this really highlights is there is a broad spectrum of individuals out there that from the surface appear. out there that from the surface appear just to be homeless, but some of them have greater needs, and some of them have different actions that would be appropriate. And so with this recomp approach, we're really able to help those that social are offered, the social services, making sure the city's laws and rules are enforced, as well as the state and federal HOPS. We're really excited with how productive this program has been in basically two full months, and that's going to lead into an ask that you'll see at the end of this presentation. And I'd like to go over just a couple other high-level projects. Of course, IT maintenance has been an important function post-COVID, and we've seen how heavily we all rely on IT to make sure that our work is done and that, to make sure that we're able to connect remote and virtual, and also to make sure that our systems are safe from negative influences or attacks. We have new firewalls installed and configured, but working on updating this we call Fire Alarm, and we're happily utilizing the NeoGo recruitment software, which are destined to the 21st century in terms of being able to conduct recruitment activities. On this chart, you'll see just a summary listing of some of the other ARPA projects we've been working on. As I mentioned, some of these fall under the direct COVID-19 response. You see some additional personnel who've helped with our government efficiency and stability. Another one to highlight, we have a city rebranding and marketing effort. So we reissued the RFP, we got eight proposals back. Staff will be interviewing the top three, and we'll be working closely with our subcommittee with a selected firm to identify the next iteration of who we, who we will be in terms of branding in our, our PR management. We're also working on the ADA transition plan. So that includes partnering with JPIA, and we will be having a thorough survey of the city to identify all of the opportunities for ADA enhancements. That will help us provide a plan and then set the funding to fund those improvements. Any questions on this slide before I move on? The next slide shows all the projects by status in terms of closeness to completion. So these are subjective categories, but we were trying to give the council a feel for how far along some of these projects are. It took us a minute to get the ball rolling because initially, the city's funds were considered through one set of rules that the federal government put out. The federal government then proceeded to review those rules and actually loosened them up to allow more flexibility for local agencies and other governments receiving these funds. So we were then able to ship some of those resources allocated. And so it did take us a little bit of time to get everything the way we wanted it, get the council approval, and then move forward. So you'll see, we have about $500,000 worth of projects completed, another $600,000 nearing completion, almost $2 million well underway, almost $3 million in development, and then the great portion, again, the council will consider as part of the fiscal year 23, 24 So as part of the received and filed for this report, we also do have a request of the council to consider additional funds to be allocated this evening. So we are about halfway through the obligation period, which runs through December of 2024, but we actually have until December of 2026 to expend all the funds, as long as they're allocated and identified for a project. We are definitely going to keep tracking those performance milestones for you from reporting back on them and making sure your overall successes and the impacts they're having on the community. And we are prioritizing making sure that the existing projects, whether they're funded through ARPA or not, as we're seeing with some of our CIP, the construction costs are coming in higher than anticipated due to the market. And so we're making sure that all of our projects, the council has already approved and funded, if they need some additional resources to augment existing funding sources, those will be considered in addition to new one-time non-recurring projects. So tonight's immediate ask, as I highlighted, due to the success of the public safety pilot program, and that's currently operating with the homeless outreach coordinators, the code enforcement team under public safety, and we only have one deputy currently assigned from our police department, and that's 40 hours a week. But as you can imagine, we are so productive with one and 40 hours a week, we know we would be even more productive with two, and it would give us more coverage for those other days of the week that we're not hitting. So we are making a request tonight to ask the council to fund, number one, a second sheriff's deputy to be added to the public safety team pilot program, and that funding will go into effect immediately as soon as Chief Walters is able to schedule that individual, so most likely mid-March. And then we are also asking the council to extend the term of the pilot program. It's currently slated to end mid-May, so we're asking for that extension through the end of this fiscal year, June 30th. Then I will bring another proposal for the council to consider for fiscal year 23, 24. That's my recommendation, and the fiscal impact will be approximately $86,000 for the additional hours to give us that additional 40 hours of coverage. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Please. If you do have a deputy, do you have staff from the police department, please, to support that? Do we have that staff?
I'll give a preliminary answer on that one, and then Mr. Brennan. So we do have staff on, we have public, we have public safety staff between the homeless outreach coordinators and our code enforcement officers seven days a week. All that can elaborate on that, so thank you, Alex.
Mayor, Members of Council, I believe we do have sufficient staff for the program, one of the projected, I should say, proposed shifts we would be able to cover with.
What is seven day a week schedule, I guess, present any problems for?
So actually, what we had discussed, obviously, prior to annual approval, would be a six-day operation. One of the things that we thought was a key component of this is to provide the opportunity for both pilot program deputies to work together for a two-day period. So what has been discussed at this time is one, one deputy would be Monday through Thursday, and then the other deputy would be Wednesday through Saturday. Based on conversations with Chief Walters, there would just be an extremely challenge with both of those individuals working together. Obviously, seven days a week always sounds great, but I think that would be the best utilization of these funds, and we will hopefully leave the city in a good enough position on Saturday, and then make it to Monday, so.
And one of the keys to note why we are requesting two days of overlap, because we are focusing, and now we have the resources to focus on the enforcement component when appropriate, we actually do transport individuals to the appropriate facilities, and that does remove one of our deputies from service. So while the homeless outreach coordinators and code enforcement continue canvassing the city, they, they're missing out on that access to the deputy, and he is transporting individuals to the appropriate facility.
I know that now we're down on outreach coordinators. Do we have new ones in our sights?
Yes, we have currently three outreach coordinators, and we are using this opportunity. Mr. Brennan is looking at the organizational structure and determining, since we do have a vacancy to fill, what the best way to do that would be. So we have had a lot of interest in our past recruitment, so we're confident that we'll be able to recruit another quality individual. But in the meanwhile, we are able, between the three existing homeless outreach coordinators and the code enforcement, to cover the shifts.
For a while at once, I mean.
In terms of a pilot program or?
Yeah, pilot program. You've got a deputy, and what else do you have?
I'll, if I answer that.
So it does vary quite a bit, obviously, with the deputy. During the deputy shifts, we currently have two outreach coordinators scheduled, so both of those individuals are available. And then on the code enforcement side, we have our code enforcement supervisor, and then some form of two to three code enforcement officers, depending on a day. So in the public safety department, there is solid support of both of the other elements of the three-pronged approach, that being outreach and the event.
May I ask? How soon can we get other coordinators?
Can you repeat that, please?
How soon can we get other coordinators?
So today, we reached out to the individual that was eligible on the previous list. Based on the results of those conversations, we may have to conduct another recruitment. We have, we have historically been able to turn those over within a week or so to conduct the recruitment and then move forward quickly.
Chief, do we have any deputy that's had training? I know we have some of our officers that aren't in this training. They can kind of fill in for a while. Is that possible?
Yes, Mr. Bear, we currently have three individuals, you know, or three deputy sheriffs that we're looking at, and they all have the training for it. It's just a matter of their schedules. We have, they're currently working on the midnight shift, so just to kind of adjust them with the family life. We have three that are, that are ready to go by, I believe it's March 10th. That's the first available.
And that's for the deputy program.
Correct.
Is there anyone that you have on staff that could help fill the void now, particularly?
I have to go back and look at that. We probably could. We are currently faced, due to promotions, due to transfers, we've got some vacancies. We've got two that are, two brandy deputy sheriffs that are, that are going to start in February, and we have another two that are going to start in March. So it's, it's all about timing, but I think we could, we could definitely help with that, just until we pick somebody at the council for it.
Maybe you could, if you would, get together with Mr. Brennan and see if we can at least get one to fill our two vacancies. That would be great. And also, I would encourage us to hire our new other outreach support deputy as soon as possible.
Sure.
There would all be a.
So you're saying you want a deputy to do the job of a homeless outreach coordinator?
No, I want a trained deputy that has done that before to fill in until we get our personnel in.
Mayor, Members of Council, so we currently cover all shifts with three of the four, three of the four outreach coordinators. We are able to provide 70 coverage. We are working to expedite the recruitment, bolster that staff, and then also prepare in the event there were additional proportions.
Okay, I fully support that, Jim, but my point is, is that we haven't had any success, and one of the reasons we did that is because we're kind of went over the top and trying to take care of our program at one shot, trying to help people as many as we can in the shortest period of time we can. And if we can do that by having the new people, I would strongly recommend that we get them for success.
So we, we want the same thing, Mayor, and so if you can let staff work, I'll work with Chief Walters, I'll work with Mr. Brennan, and we'll make sure that we have proper coverage to make sure there's no gaps.
And by the way, not only has this become effective, but the whole world knows about it. And I think our success is going to bring success to helping the homeless, not only our community, as we continue to do as we have over the last years, but also in the cities that need us. So we should be very proud of that. It's kind of become, it's kind of rubbed off on all the deputies, even the ones that may have not wanted to participate in helping. And I think that is a sign that the program is a success. So keep up the good work.
Sure.
Thank you, Jim, also. Okay, we'll go to, this is a recommendation we'll go over, please?
Yes, so, please. I'd say a recommendation is to be considered by NACF to be one, received and filed with education, direct staff to see with extending the original six-month pilot program from May to June of 2023, and adding one additional deputy to provide 40 additional hours of coverage per week. And item number four is offering for reallocation of the additional $86,000 in the ARPA allocation that is currently allocated for the purchase of property housing on the U.S.
Thank you. Okay, I might need a motion. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Roll call, please.
I'm hoping we have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, affect by Councilmember Warren. I will now proceed with the roll call vote. Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor from Tampa?
Yes.
And Mayor Shabbard?
Okay, new business. This is 12A. We're going to adopt the resolution of intention to hold the first brain of employees to amend the California Republican employees retirement system contract with the city of Stanton.
Good evening, all of Mayor Members of the council. Tonight's item focuses on two things related to the city's contract with the California Republican employees retirement system. One is our contract has for years been out of date with what is actually allowable practice, and so it's a cleanup. Currently, our contract states that you can exclude persons compensated on an hourly basis from participation in helpers, which is illegal. So we have not been following our rule, we have rather been following the law. And the second is helpers just recently made a determination on behalf of cities such as Stanton who apply to allow for the exclusions of certain position classifications. In our case, we requested intern, park ranger, recreation leader, and senior recreation leader to allow us to grant them more hours than the traditionally allowable 1040 without having to enroll them in perks. So this gives not only the city more flexibility, it gives us more consistency in having fewer employees with more hours, and it gives our employees more hours rather than having, having to juggle multiple part-time jobs. So that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, this was quite a rant for us. Anytime you can get helpers to do something to help a city, it's very favorable. You know, one of the things you have to consider is that maybe costing them some money because they are responsible for their retirement match and the management of that program. So kudos to the HR department, let them all know, they've done an excellent job on that, and I will bring it back for a motion. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor, we have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, affect by Mayor from San Antonio. I will now proceed with the roll call vote. Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor from San Antonio?
Yes.
And Mayor Shabbard?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, Members of the public, may I address the city council? Are any items before our jurisdiction, provided that no action to be taken on, not as in the items? Do we have any further communications?
None, sir.
Okay, we do have a special guest. He's going to be introducing himself for the first time to us from the office of Janet Webb. I believe he is our district representative. Come on down.
Hello, I'm Mayor, hello, City Council. Nice to meet you again. May I, I believe, have the opening for, people's on the left, I told you that this is very nice to meet you, and yes, to answer your question, I am in District 11. It's very nice to be here in Stanton. I have lived in one of you, so I know Stanton very well. So it's nice to meet all of the city administration. I'm sure we'll meet each other soon. But I beg you, I apologize, I just want to be able to serve the city and constituents. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, but it's very nice to be all of you. Thank you for your time.
If you come up, we will be more than happy to talk, we're going to give you the seat yet so you'll be official. So you got one, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, right here.
All right. Right, sit around.
Thank you so much.
Especially nice.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you over here.
Card?
Anyway, he's going to email me his contact, I'll reveal it to you as soon as it's approached, and then we'll get you something. So maybe I'll say that. And also, make sure that all our staff has his contact, too. That would be great. Anyway, thank you for being here this evening. We really appreciate you stopping by.
Thank you.
Is there any house in the public? Goods, public carries, no written communications, Mayor, Chairman, Council, Initiative Business at this time? Okay. Free reports, announcements, okay. Alice, why don't you tell us about Chicas?
Oh, yes, so Councilmember Gary Taylor and Councilmember Donald Morris and I, as well as a couple of other votes from the city, notably Jill Rett and our other candidate, was at the ribbon cutting ceremony today. So we were very excited to try their warm drinks. It was very chilly that morning. And they also were very generous and I think gave food for our folks to take home. And it was just so amazing to see, you know, family business take off. And, you know, the son was there. He goes to Niagara High School. It was just, you know, at the school for lost land residents, many of those right in Anaheim near the border. So it's great to have a business like that in our neighborhood. They did mention a couple of public safety issues, but I'm sure Jerran will be there.
But then Donna, she can tell us about Chicas.
Yeah, so we all had the pleasure to go down to Chicas and introduce ourselves and congratulate the business opening. And we did very nicely. So we have fun and talk to people.
Anyway, there's two more fabulous restaurants in Stanton, so make sure you avail yourselves of them at the opportunity. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to council. Items for future meeting.
As far as I saw, a mail from that from China talking about compensation, something that we had talked about. And we brought up city council compensation. And I saw you break down earlier that we should set up a meeting or something to talk about that. Because the comp, what you put down was just the salaries. There's also all the benefits being paid. We need to look at that. We need to look at, not necessarily the meeting, but I lived in Irvine today, and it's the 800 car loan. They make $300 or even less than us, but a 800 car loan, it's not taxed. That's a nice benefit. Not that we need anything like that, but it's just something we seem to have to look at. Because we can't give ourselves a raise, but we can help people in the future on the council and make sure that they're compensated. So it's nothing to give us a raise for. We can't do that legally, I understand.
Correct.
But it's something we should agendaize and take a look at.
Yes, so councilmember Warren had brought that up before. So I was just sending that update just to let you know that I'm working on it. And my intention was to bring it back as part of the fiscal year 2324 budget workshop when we consider cost of living allowances for all employees and where we are in the market. And so it's definitely part of the package. And Mayor Shalbert also brought up that it was incomplete, so we have gone back and filled out some of those other benefits as well. So all of that, all the compensation, where council and employees will be all be considered as part of the budget workshop. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to forsake my salary, but very unfortunate, you know, Lamborghini.
Can I offer yourself?
Yeah, but I'll drink coffee. One of the things I'd like to consider, the feasibility of a safe zone for our vendors. As you know, vending is becoming very popular in communities throughout Orange County. We have people that are selling food, people are selling a different variety of things. I would like for us to maybe look at a way in which we can accommodate that in our community in a central location. The reason for that is, I think it's really hard for, just as an example, for a restaurant that sells tacos and tamales and things like that. And when right parked down on the sidewalk in front of their store is a tamale guy selling tamales. So you have a business that's worked in Stanton that pays taxes, that has a business license, that has a health permit, pays rent to his landlord, trying to make it. But yet you have somebody out on the street who's probably selling the same product. Which not saying it's bad, it could be even better for a third of the price. How fair is that to our business community? Expressing how that we're struggling with the economy the way it is and just coming back from COVID. So I'd like to take a look at maybe developing a program so that we could have a zone through where vendors should apply, they can come in and kind of make it a drawing point. Any community that we have people from the outside in Stanton is a destination. We're also making it so that it would be available for our local businesses to also be there, maybe on a certain day. But also it would not interfere with their regular operation. So just something to take a look at. I did have a chance to discuss this with councilmember Torres. I asked him if he would be interested in taking the leadership role in this, and he said he would. So I'm going to wait to see how the council feels about it. All right, is there any other initiated business? Okay, anything for a future state session? During July, future state session. Okay, moving on. Our attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have my.
Okay, and our executive director.
Yes, I do have my hand this evening. I wanted to report that on the Talk on the Block update. So as we know, council was interested in understanding the schedule for this year. And staff has been working internally to identify the way to make these Talk on the Blocks the most effective, impactful, and a good use of staff's time. And so we decided that in 2023, as we progress through the year, we're going to be looking for communities and public groups that want to hear from us, that want to close themselves upon. And so we already have a couple lined up. So I'm considering the Northwest Orange County Republican Assembly presentation that's happening this Thursday for public safety to be a Talk on the Block because it's open to the public, and we'll be talking about public safety, an item of interest. And so we welcome any other members of the public who are interested in this Thursday, February 16. Doors open at 6:15 p.m. at the Oco Block, uh, Oco Block headquarters on 11100 Beach Boulevard. After that, in March, we're working with the Lampara Mobile Home Estates. If you remember, we have three residents that visited us at the last meeting. I had a chance to speak with two of the three, and I also got the contact information for that parks management. And so we're identifying dates in March where we will go out with public safety personnel, Orange County Sheriff's Department personnel, the Orange County Fire Authority personnel, as well as myself and other staff to do a presentation on the timeline of their requesting, which is between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. at their community clubhouse. And then we've also been in conversations with Park Place Apartments Property Management and their residents who are also requesting a Talk on the Block at their location. So again, we'll be going to them, and that will be in either April or May. So I think they're happening organically. If you know of other groups, neighborhoods, I know we've visited The Wedge last year in November. We're happy to go out and we're happy to tailor our presentation to whatever is of the greatest interest of that particular community. So please continue to send those requests through me, and we will also be canvassing the community for other interested groups.
Thank you. One of the other things on Talk on the Block, I thought maybe it might be purpose to also invite the local group representatives from our elected officials to be there. We have our chief, we have our chief, we have our staff, we have you, we have us. I think it'd be good to have somebody from state senator's office, somebody from Lou Korea's office, somebody from our senator's office, and also from Doug Jamie's office. That way we'll all, makes good, because some things that we can't solve, but they can, is at their level. So rather than having everybody do it separately, let's do it as a group. I think they would appreciate that very much. Okay, now I'm going to put you on the spot tonight. I would like you to give a report on your new council training that you went through and how it worked out.
Oh, yes, I got to learn a lot. I got to go.
Put your mic up, sir.
Oh, yes. I got to go with our city manager. It was really, really good. I got to learn a lot. And I learned that city council members of West Russian People's. Thank you.
And did you hear your group?
Yeah, it was just very informative, and they do a great job of, you know, has a lot of content over a short period of time, and in the overwhelming, I think, for the council members. They did a great job of finding speakers who kept it light and funny, and they had skits of the worst possible council meeting to highlight the rules and things that you need to follow. It was very well done.
That'd be great. The only other announcement is I'm, and you're going to be very happy seeing it. I'm taking a short hiatus from monster food drives. I'm going, I'm still working with churches, schools, and charities, but I'm kind of slowing down a little bit. So we'll get back to that, and the boy scout's helping me. So just like, give you the good news. So you have more time to finish the bathroom doors in the parks. All right, everybody, anything else? Anything else, Sam? Okay.
I would just, I strive to. I strive to.
Now, I used to only have a jacket from you because the sheriff's department hasn't given me one yet, so you're okay, so go ahead.
You're still discussing. So good evening, all mayor, council members, and city staff. This is my report for January 2023 for the Orange County Fire Department. I mean, the month of January, we ran a total of 384 incidents within the city boundaries of Stanton. Eleven of those were fire calls, related calls, 344 were medical aids, and 29 of those were hazardous conditions or service calls. And then in the unincorporated area of Orange County serviced by engine and medic squad 46, we ran a total of 71 incidents. Three of those were fires. 68 were medical related, and then zero were hazardous conditions or service calls. There were two notable fire incidents that occurred in January in City Stanton and also the incorporated area of Orange County. The first one on January 6, around 12 o'clock, 12:06 in the afternoon, our dispatch center received multiple reports of a garage fire. While the crews were en route, they were getting updated reports from our dispatch center that there was explosions being heard in the garage. So the fire was upgraded to a, what we call, working structure fire response. We're getting enhanced additional units. First arriving companies arrived within five minutes of dispatch and reported out a heavy black smoke, heavy black smoke showing from a working garage fire. This was in a detached garage apartment complex. We have the residents in the detached garages together. Crews quickly engaged in knocking down the fire. And we're happy to, the report that they were able to contain the fire to the garage units and preventing any extension to the residences, other than some minor smoke damage. From that incident, Red Cross was requested due to that smoke damage displaced four adults and one child. So a Red Cross came out and assisted with that. Another notable incident from that fire is while crews were extinguishing the fire and working around the area, one of the, one of the first arriving engine company captains looked down on the ground, saw an envelope stacked with cash. It was reported, I think it was a total of $18,000, $18,000 in cash that one of the fleeing residents grabbed from their home and dropped it. So they turned it over to the Orange County Sheriff's officers. They're on scene and were able to find the rightful owner of that and turn it back, return that property back to them, which was a great, notable circumstance that came out of that fire because obviously this person's in fear, losing everything, and they almost probably lost their entire life savings at the blink of an eye. From that fire, the damage was pretty minimal. They estimated fire damage about 25,000 to the actual structure of the garage and about 10,000 to the contents. Then on January 31, our dispatch center received another report of a structured fire involving a garage. Actually, pretty close to the original incident I talked about, A331 Simitas Avenue. Once again, while crews were en route, they started receiving multiple reports of the fire as well as fireworks exploding in the garage. Crews arrived on scene on that fire and were able to quickly knock it down. Since it was a detached garage, they were able to prevent any spread to the residents, which is great because, I mean, it's, obviously it's tragic. They lost the contents of the garage and there's damage to that structure. But they didn't, they weren't created, you know, didn't have to move out of their house due to fire damage or were temporarily buying housing. That fire was a little bit more extensive in damage. There was estimated about $100,000 to the actual structure of the garage and approximately $50,000 to the contents of the garage. And then that fire, the first fire I talked about, they weren't able to determine the cause because there's somebody competing, causes of that fire for sources. The second fire investigators, they couldn't rule out between either improperly discarded smoking materials or an electrical fire failure of like a multi-plant adapter. A lot of times after these fires, they can rule down an area, but there could be competing sources of admission. So sometimes without, you know, really concrete evidence, they can't rule out the two or one or the other. As far as some upcoming OCFA events, the first one I want to highlight here is we're happy to report after a three-year hiatus due to the COVID pandemic, we're going to be opening up our training, our regional headquarters in Irvine for our annual open house. This event is attended by approximately 3,000 to 4,000 people of the communities we serve. It's a fantastic event. It's going to run, it's going to be on Saturday, March the 4th, from 10:00 to 3:00. At that event, there's programs and presentations for adults, for children. We teach heavy toxic drills in the homes, fire safety around the home. We talk about community risk reduction, fire, you know, vegetation fire, safety for communities that live out in the urban interface. As well as there's going to be live presentations. They'll do usually a fire extinguisher presentation, some live fire demonstrations where they'll actually light a structure on fire and have crews come in and respond and put it out. We have a couple of, we're very unique. We have the, we have our Urban Search and Rescue Canine and our arson canines. So they'll do live demonstrations with those canines and how they work. And then also it's going to be the debut of our newly purchased community education and fire safety trailer. So this trailer, it's a, it was funded through a grant. It's approximately like a 45-foot fifth-wheel trailer. And then it has a, you know, kitchen, a barbecue, heated door simulator like for a house fire. It's all built around community education, and they can do different pops with the kitchen fire and barbecue fire and show people how to turn off, you know, a gas stove or how to turn off the gas at the meter. And the great thing about this trailer, it's available to all the communities that we serve. So through, this is going to be the debut of it, but following this debut in March, it'll be available for future community events that are surrounding public safety. So we're very happy to share that with those citizens. Next, I want to talk about upcoming promotions. So one of my, one is a dear friend of mine, Fire Captain Mike Yan, but he was also my administrative Fire Captain before he was sent back to the field due to staff shortages. But Mike was also a long-term Fire Captain at Fire Station 46 for several years. So I'm happy to announce that Mike will be promoted to Battalion Chief. That will take place on February 23. We have a promotional ceremony, there are a board directors meeting or before that. And I'm happy to say that Mike will be assigned to Battalion 11 here in Garden Grove, which responds into this area a lot. So I'm happy to see Mike promoted. I'm happy I'll still see him around when it calls and not completely miss out on him for that. Additionally, I'd like to, obviously during the election year, we brought on several new council members. One of the things, a couple of the division chiefs, myself and some of the other division chiefs created was a kind of like an OCFA information orientation pamphlet or booklet. It's just kind of start those, provide that orientation to those new board of director members. Obviously, Mayor Shalbert's been on our board for several years and knows the ins and outs of the authority. So this is our way of kind of our onboarding process. After we created it, we realized that it's probably, there's a lot of values that I follow in our council members. For those of you who don't serve our board of directors, to give you a little bit more orientation to the agency itself and then also talk about board specifics about this division and all the way down to the city and some of the city statistics. So following the meeting, I have one of those and hand out to each of the new, the new, excuse me, council members, a new council member, a tourist, and also one for you Hannah as well. Like I said, it's just a general information packet. Then obviously if there's, at any time you have any questions or additional information, I'll be more than happy to present that to you. Lastly, for my closing remarks, I'd like to honor, close out tonight in an honor and respect one of our former division chiefs, Ron Roberts. Tragically, Ron Roberts, he retired this past October of 2022. And on February 9, while on vacation with his wife in Costa Rica, he tragically lost his life in an ocean leaving incident. Ron was a, one, he was a friend, he was a mentor. He served over 40 years in the fire service. He began originally back in Westminster Fire Department and then transitioned to the Orange County Fire Authority in 1995. He was retired. He rose up through the ranks and retired on his last post position, was a division chief in Division One, overseeing our neighbors in Garden Grove, Rossmore, Los Alamos, Westminster, and Midway City. Like I said, Ron, I mean, he was beloved by his coworkers and his, by his city staff. He's represented at his recent retirement. All the city staff came and acknowledged him and all have, you know, really nice, kind words to say about Ron. He was truly a servant leader. For me, he was a personal friend and mentor. Ron and I served on Cal Fire and City Management Team Six for over eight years, traveled up and down the state on some of the large traveled up and down the state on some of the largest wildfires in California. And he will truly be missed. I'd like to just honor him and pay some respects to him tonight by closing up the, my report in honor of Ron. And that completes my report for January, and I'm open to any additional, any questions to come.
Thank you. I was going to, well, assurance tonight's meeting, you know, upon Roberts, the OCFA will be giving a certificate from the city, from a city card for the families, so she, we'll make sure she, they get that. We appreciate it.
Absolutely, I will do.
Very thank you. Good night, everybody, and Happy Valentine's Day. Go home and eat your marxist tacos.